Anyway, thank you all for joining. Welcome to members of the Select Board. For this meeting of the Planning Board on May 4th. You have the minutes of the April 20th meeting. Are there any may I have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
No move, we accept the minutes as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions or comments about the minutes? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll to approve the minutes? Please. Jennifer stepped away. I think. I see an empty screen with nobody in it. Okay, I will call the roll. I vote in favor. Kate?
Um, nay.
Marie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Gary?
I'll abstain, I wasn't there.
So that's four to one with one abstention. And I still don't see Christine on the call, so. But we've got a majority in favor of the minutes. Thank you very much.
Bill, we're talking about next year's planning board and Christine is not hasn't elected has elected not to run, right? I mean, can you guys just talk us through what some of the priorities are?
I'm sorry?
Yeah. I don't see why we can't start. I mean, Christine is not going to be on the board next year.
It has nothing to do with her being on the board or not, Kate. She asked to be part of this presentation and I wanted to be part of the presentation.
But we're talking about our priorities for next year.
That's right. And she's a member of this board. Darn.
Well, the rest of us can start and then she can.
Kate, would you please hold your horses, please?
Please don't tell me to cool my horses.
I'm the chairman of this committee and I'm going to run the committee meeting the way I want to. I have that authority. We're not going to start without Christine on this topic.
I would suggest there's a polite way to ask me to defer without telling me to cool my horses.
Okay, well, you keep insisting on moving ahead and I'm telling you, we're not going to. What we will do.
Bill, would you like me to call her and see?
Yeah, would you please?
Let me do a phone call.
What we can do is go ahead with the special permit, which I think is a pretty straightforward one. For 46 Lake Drive and I see Jackson Alberti from First Foresight is here. I assume you're going to present, Jackson?
Yes, correct.
Let's see. Wayne, can you please read the required notice before we talk about this?
Okay. Bear with me. I have two of them. Want to make sure I have the right one. So this is for 46 Lake Drive, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Stockbridge Planning Board acting as special permit granting authority is scheduling a public hearing via remote meeting for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021, to consider the application of William and Marcia Coff at 46 Lake Drive to construct a screened porch under section 6.5 of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. The complete application and plans are on file in the Planning Board office and the town offices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jackson, would you like to go ahead and you want to share the screen or?
I think that would.
Sorry, Marie, hang on.
I need to recuse myself from this vote because I know Bill and I didn't feel I could do an unbiased report on this. So I need to just recuse from this decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and put the site plan up if that's all right.
Yep.
You're all able to see that?
Yes.
Essentially, the work proposed here is the installation of a proposed screen porch, which is 185 square feet. And the removal of this, the existing deck located below that area and the removal of this existing stone porch here or stone patio here. So that that'll be removed as well as a section of deck and as well as this existing portion of deck, which houses a hot tub currently. That's 115 square feet. So this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's 11.2% coverage in the R2 district. So that's obviously non-conforming to the 10%. But what's being proposed here is the removal of several sections of deck, which will be replaced by this 185 square foot screen porch. And in combination with this portion of deck, which is 115 square feet in this section of deck, we are looking at a net gain or a net loss of impervious surface of about 26 square feet. So it's slightly, very slightly reducing the coverage within the LPOD and still remaining pre-existing non-conforming, not becoming any more non-conforming than it currently is. And that's the project in its entirety. It's 10 feet, four inches wide and 17 feet, eight inches long. There's straw walls proposed along the entire front of the house. The lake side of the house, I should say, to protect from any ground disturbance that will happen when they're removing deck posts and things like that. And there's currently requests for determination of applicability filed with the Stockbridge Conservation Commission for this, which they have yet to act on at the moment. So that's where this project currently stands. And I can answer any questions you might have about it.
The hot tub is not going to be replaced?
No, the hot tub will be removed, disposed of offsite in that section of deck located here on the southern, the southeastern corner of the house. That'll be completely removed and restored to lawn.
Okay.
And Jackson, can you just explain for any viewers that the 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 coverage of vegetation?
Sure.
There's nothing going away on the lake side, correct?
Correct. What we have shown in our application is vegetation within 35 feet of the lake as well as vegetation within 150 feet of the lake. And no vegetation is proposed to be removed whatsoever, not even lawn. This proposed screen porch is going to be located entirely on top of existing deck and existing stone patio, which are both going to be removed. And then this area will be restored to lawn as well as the existing patio. So it's a loss of impervious surface overall. No removal of vegetation.
Any other questions from members of the Planning Board? Do any members of the public, butters or the like, have questions or comments? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Wayne, that was you?
Yes.
Thank you. Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Gary? Bill?
Yes.
Kate?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Gary, did you say yes?
I did.
Where is? Okay, okay, that's it.
I'm here.
Oh, Christine, you're here now? Sorry, I couldn't see you.
I'm sorry. I don't know what's going on, but I'm having an awful lot of problems. I'm here and I'm saying yes. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So the meeting is closed. Is there any further discussion or can the board proceed to?
The public hearing is closed.
Sorry, the public hearing is closed, right?
I made the motion that we approve the application as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments as to why I support this application. It's basically, as Jackson stated, there's it's the the deck is going over an area that's pea gravel, existing pea gravel. And so there's no increase in impervious surface. And in terms of storm water runoff, there's no vegetation loss at the edge of the lake. So for those reasons, I I support this request. And also that's it's in scale with with the whole, this property did a expansion several years back. And we approved that expansion. What I liked is that they they kept the color neutral and they kept the the property in scale with the surrounding area.
Thank you, Kate.
Actually, there's an, there's an actual loss of impervious surface, right? A gain of
Sixty?
Yeah.
Twenty-six square feet roughly gained of pervious surface.
Yeah.
And then also the the removal of this stone patio, which
Right.
technically impervious, but that'll be restored to vegetation.
Okay.
Let me call the roll.
Do I need to state the findings first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Under section 6.3.6 of the zoning bylaws. The when we vote, I think we're voting to agree that we have the following findings. This permit is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this bylaw and in harmony with its general intent and purpose. It's essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location. It will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And it will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use of any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety or general welfare. Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Gary?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bill, I mean, sorry. Nancy?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to this joint meeting with the
Okay.
Select Board.
Right here. Roxanne.
And I appreciate the Select Board's patience in putting up with our with our rearrangement of the agenda. As I said, Christine wanted to convey some thoughts about this the work that consultants can do for the Planning Board, both the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission consultant, Phil Arnold and Jeff Lacy are consultant on the open space residential zoning bylaw. She has shared the screen. Christine, please go ahead.
Bill, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Are we going to ask questions as we go along? Or are we going to wait to hold questions till the end of the presentation? How would you like to proceed, as Chair?
Well, thanks for asking, Michael. Let's let's hold off until the end. Make your notes so you don't forget and address the questions at the end.
And how many slides is it?
Twenty-four.
So I have a question, Bill.
Go ahead.
The agenda says that this is a discussion, not a, not a, a presentation and a lobbying effort. And I really think that, you know, I haven't, I wasn't aware that we were doing a presentation tonight. I thought we were having a discussion as a board with.
We are having a discussion.
This is a presentation.
We're going to have a discussion about the presentation.
That's not on the agenda. That's not what the agenda says.
The agenda says discussion.
Close enough.
This is, this is a discussion about this presentation. Christine, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to the Board of Selectmen for their help with our zoning proposals. As you know, in carrying out its work, Planning Board members must make decisions. And it's not based on what we personally like, but it's how the proposal complies with the bylaws, both state and the general, general laws at the state level and our local bylaws. And so to do this, we are required to use criteria that the bylaws propose and approve and that our bylaws that are, we develop are regulating development through creation of amendments of the zoning district, dimensional regulation, use requirements and other obligations. Now, why can't I advance this? I'm not for sure. The present bylaws are not illegal. They have deficiencies. They were identified in Joel Russell's diagnostic report and the Planning Board's work. Joel's report made several recommendations prioritizing the addressing of housing, including accessory dwelling units, which we are presently working on. He also talked about downtown viability and vitality, the effects of zoning and regulating development that affects the Stockbridge Bowl, our important town resource, and the effectiveness of our historic preservation bylaw. He also mentioned that our not-for-profit organizations are not regulated under zoning because of the Dover Amendment, but we are permitted to institute a limited form of site plan review. And this could be a future bylaw. I think we all know that we have issues with our non-conformity provisions and how they impact properties in the town. Do they need to be modified? In 20 for fiscal year 2021, we want to thank the Select Board, the Finance Committee in the town because they appropriated money for us to work on our zoning bylaws. We started with addressing subdivisions because the Planning Board may not disapprove a subdivision plan unless it violates the Board rules and regulations and the requirements of the Board of Health regulations. And our present bylaws that require one, two and four acre zoning hurt the environment and contribute to sprawl. And this is determined by numerous environmental organizations, including Mass Audubon. Joel recommended that we adopt an open space residential design or natural resource protection bylaw. And we have been working on this kind of a bylaw since last November when Jeff Lacy was hired to work with us. We have a draft at this point that is going to be ready for May 12th and a public information session to hear how the community feels about it. And then we can, you can go forward, the Planning Board can go forward with adopting what they want in a new draft bylaw. We also are fortunate to have the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission contract planner working with us. And he addressed parking, losing main streets, retail, signs, driveways and accessory dwelling units. All except the accessory dwelling units, we hope will be on the town meeting warrant for our general town meeting in June. Planning Board members are volunteers, so having this expertise has really been so important to us because we want bylaws that are fair and will pass the Attorney General's review. So we have scratched the surface, but there's more that needs to be done. We want to continue to work on the extensive recommendations in the diagnostic report that is available on the town website. The visioning report also recommended that we have a comprehensive housing study. That report is also on the town website. Areas where we can continue to work besides those that I've already mentioned that Jeff is working on include looking at trees and determining whether or not we have adequate bylaws to protect them. Dealing with short-term rentals, there is a general bylaw that's been developed by the Board of Selectmen. But we need, you need to do, I'm sorry, I keep thinking I'm going to be there and I know I'm not. The Planning Board needs to determine if a zoning bylaw is needed. And there are several amendments to Mass General Law that have been passed particularly since 2016. And the Planning Board can review these and see if we wish to take them forward to the public for an amendment to our bylaws. One of the important ones is the amendment that allows town boards to be able to hire a consultant and have the applicant pay for those fees, even though the town board will pick the consultant and the consultant will work for them. Certainly, we don't need that for all the developments that we are looking at. But as we look at some of the more complicated ones, it might be nice to have this on the books. We have it on the books for subdivisions, but not for the other provisions of the bylaw. I think that we have spoken at our planning board meetings about the lake and pond overlay district and whether or not that is strong enough with the applications that we're seeing. And low-impact development standards for stormwater runoff and non-point source pollution are also potential issues that need to be addressed. So as you can see, there is a myriad of needs. So the Planning Board is requesting an amount of 40,000 and there's an asterisk there because we don't know about the carryover from this year for bylaws, maintaining community character and charm and working to address the needs that are determined to be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Are there any questions or comments, particularly from the Select Board, but not exclusively from the Select Board? Members?
Well, can Bill, would you mind if the Select Board and and the Playing Board had discussion first? Then we open up to the public because I have a number of questions.
Yeah, I I started with you guys, then we'll open it up to the public.
Okay.
Can we go back to the full screen? So I can see everyone?
Oh, sure. I think I'm I'm not for sure how to get out of here.
And sharing. I have one question that came up and I didn't know if you had the answer yet, Bill. And I'm not sure if Michael has the answer. Do we know how much was expended to date on the various consultants for the Planning Board?
Michael, I think you have those figures.
Right, so to date, we have $11,832 has been spent from Berkshire Regional Planning. We only, the last Berkshire Regional was 423. So we're probably going to see additional one coming in. And I know there was just one, I believe, last week from Jeff Lacy that was just being processed for this week. But right now, eight, 11,832 of the 40 spent.
That's just the RPC?
That's BRPC and LACI.
And LACI?
Yep.
How about Russell? Aaron?
Yes.
That's included?
That's all bills that have been tracked through that account.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And one of the questions, Roxanne, is can any unexpended amounts in this fiscal year be carried over into the next fiscal year? Which, if possible, if that were possible, would reduce the need for the full request as presented.
Which, do we know what account this is in right now?
Yes. So you can yeah, it's for the article in particular. So I'm looking at it right now. Ray sent it over this morning.
Okay.
So it's town offices, ATM, or professional services, 01.185 point five eight eight zero point nine nine nine.
Okay, because I was looking for it and I thought I saw it and then I couldn't find it today. Okay.
So yes, you can encumber funds at the end of the year. So this could be, if however you carry this out, it could be amended at the town meeting if there's, in the anticipation of funds remaining to just encumber and lower the amount if you so choose to go that way.
I think would make sense from a fiscal responsibility standpoint. But that, as you say, that's something, I guess, that we can defer till town meeting and we know at that point what's been spent and what remains. But it's clear there's, there's a substantial amount remaining unspent.
All right, so I have a, I have a couple of questions I wanted to have a discussion around. And let me just start by, by actually thanking Christine for the work on doing the presentation and for her term on the Playing Board. I think that Christine has bold ideas and she's not afraid to put them forward. And I think that we need more people like that in town because I think that, that discussion, debate of these kind of ideas is important to improving the town. Um, that said, you know, I want to, there's only one piece of, of, one slide in particular that I, that I had a comment on, which was the statement that one, two and four acre zoning is somehow antithetical to conservation. I mean, the bylaw, the zoning bylaws we have have been developed over a course of 90 years. And I think that when you look at all the towns in the Berkshires, especially when you look at our proximity to some of the biggest cultural attractions in the Berkshires, we've done a pretty good job at making, at preserving the rural character of this town. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that I, that maybe it's, that maybe considering incremental change is a good thing, but we just saw a breathtaking laundry list of potential changes to our zoning. You know, there's, you know, 20 acre parcels represent something like 9,000 acres of the 14,000 land acres of, of, of land in this town. And, and that's just one of many things that were on that list. And, and I, the first point I just want to make is I don't accept at face value or fact that, that somehow we have to get better at conservation. We're already great at that. In fact, we're great at so many things that that's where my skepticism comes in in terms of this rush, rush to change it. And I guess the first question I have for you is, many of you ran on the concept of reasonable growth and three of the four, you know, Gary is running for reelection and I think, you know, You know, Gary is running for reelection and I think, you know, where he stands on the issues is clear. But the other three candidates for Planning Board are also, every one of them has said in their, in their materials that they support reasonable growth. And I kind of want to know what that means, including, you know, the last ten years, we built something like fifty-three new homes in this town. To my knowledge, I think that was the number that I saw the other day. So how much more is reasonable? Because I think that goes to the heart of what planning should be about, which is figuring out. How do we maintain the character of the town? While at the same time respecting property rights and respecting the needs of the, of the, of the great estates. And, and respecting what the folks who have decided to live here, you know, are looking for in terms of maintaining that character. So what is reasonable growth?
You know, I rather than allow candidates on this call to make campaign. Speeches. And I'm not going to answer what regional growth, what reasonable growth is either because I also ran on that topic and maybe I can talk about that in another setting. But I will take issue, Patrick, with your reference to. Words to the effect that we're rushing. Bylaw change group, particularly the open space bylaw. I have to remind you that this bylaw has been worked on in one form or another for about three and a half years. I don't call that rushing.
Which?
We're still not, the open space presidential bylaw, one form or another, one form or another. Let me finish, please.
Am I going to be able to ask a question afterwards?
Yes, when you, when I finish, you can ask. I would say what we're doing with the open space bylaw is anything but rushing. And. And, and we're not there yet and the, and the town meeting may well have, and particularly the meeting next week when we hope. Large numbers of the public will be on the Zoom call. Will have concerns and questions that will illuminate the issues for the Planning Board and we'll take those into account. I just don't accept that we're rushing into anything here.
I don't believe I said anybody was rushing anything, Bill.
I, I thought those were words I heard. But Kate, go ahead.
I think we need to be very clear and specific in our conversation. We have not been working on an open space residential development bylaw for three years. The zoning review, when committee, when it was disbanded in favor of moving the work to the Planning Board. And that was in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. We were focused on the mandate that we had after the desist of public hearing, which was to. Address the cottage era state bylaw. So, and the Planning Board. The last time the Planning Board met in hard copy in person in March of two thousand and twenty. The Planning Board agreed not to. Address a bylaw that would apply to the entire town, but to focus on the issue of the cottage era state bylaw. So that was March of two thousand, March of two thousand and twenty. And I think it's important to be specific and clear.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members of the Select Board?
Well. Look. I think that having a bylaw committee is a good idea. I would like to see it be a joint project of the Select Board and the Planning Board. I could see a couple of Planning Board members, a couple of Select Board members and Michael on it. If you want members of the public on it too, I'd be open to that. I, I personally. Don't know what your plan is on replacing Christine when she leaves the board, but I have, I, I don't like the idea of. Folks having meetings with our consultants in secrecy and if it makes it less efficient, that's fine. The subcommittee could have become simply opted to meet in public and we instead. Ended up with reducing the subcommittee to one person, which I think is great. I think that her, her contributions were fine. But going forward, if you want my support on this, I want to broaden this and make every meeting with a consultant a public meeting, including any feedback that's given. I've watched, I've watched the, the proposals, the percentages change and the debates. Many of these things seem to be resolved in an opaque way. And I'm not saying that any of them are right or wrong, but I want them out in the open. So if you want to, if you want my support on this, it's going to require that we, we, we approach changes to our bylaws as a joint project. I think the Select Board, we, we did what, six bylaws this year and we didn't spend a nickel of the taxpayers' money. And I think that Roxanne and I have shown that a, 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 an interest in this topic and in, and. And the ability to compromise. So you look at the short term rentals, I wanted something more expensive. You guys convinced me that, that we should start a little bit smaller and that's what we did. And I, and I think we need a process that is a little bit different than what we've had this year.
Well, may I make a comment here?
Of course.
You're going off topic, you're going off of the agenda. We're really here to discuss. How they see, they were going to present to us the various ways that they would be utilizing this consultant that they've asked for the forty thousand dollars for. That's why we're here. Christine laid out a number of different things. I'd like to know that the Planning Board in general as a group. Agrees with most of those points in terms of being able to utilize a consultant and. Whether or not you really believe it's going, it's helping you. I've listened to Phil Arnold and I think he's very good. So I think there's a big difference between writing general bylaws and writing zoning bylaws, for one thing. It's a, it requires a lot more in-depth knowledge and a lot of work. They obviously have to get the input from the public, which is part of the public presentation and the public hearings. That will happen and I'm assuming that some of that consulting. Money that would be asked for would probably be expended in that way. Specifically to educate the public on what they're looking at and what the possibilities are and getting feedback from the public. So it can be incorporated, but you have to remember the Planning Board is an elected board. That is, that is their, you know, their job is to take care of. You know, the zoning bylaws and so.
I just feel like.
Legitimate points have been made, but I would really like to poll the various Planning Board members to get everyone's individual take on. What was presented as the possible uses for various consultants.
Feel free to answer my question about reasonable growth as we conduct the poll.
Answer my question first, please? Can we just poll? The members? Marie?
I'm sorry, was that Roxanne?
Yes.
I can't tell quite who's talking. You were asking that you want feedback from Planning Board members on, on this. On what we have in mind for these consultants?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Who wants to start?
I will.
Marie?
Well, I think. As we saw that Phil Arnold was invaluable in quickly writing up those bylaws that you guys all wanted. That was what we paid him for. He, he did an excellent job. He got it correct. He checked with the town council and that's what we really need. We don't have the expertise. To write bylaws and amend bylaws and look at the laws. We truly. Truly used Phil in a good way and he was worth more than his money and I feel. Today, in today's world, that we really need to know what we're doing and we're just people off the street and we really. To help us with wording on bylaws and how to present it to the public, I think this is something that is worth the town's money to do.
Can I hear from the other members of the Planning Board?
Mary, do you want to speak?
Sure. I would say based on. What was presented that. I don't, I don't agree with the, probably a, a good portion of it. I think Phil's done a wonderful job. But I'll go back to what we previously talked about, which is we still don't have a cottage era state bylaw. And instead we've gone off on this open space bylaw, which. Not that there's anything wrong with it, but I just think that we should have. Done the cottage era state bylaw first because that's what got us into this. Situation to begin with. And. I'm not convinced about. The, the two acre and four acre zoning at all. And I think that. Our predecessors before us did a wonderful job of laying the groundwork for us to continue to maintain the town and its. Present state and I can, I would like to continue to do the same, so. I'm not in favor of all this grandiose stuff.
Well, yeah, although I'm asking more, do you think that there is a use? For consultants to assist you in whatever the Planning Board decides is its priorities?
Well, I think that there's a place for consultants. I don't think that, you know, we didn't, we haven't gotten to where we are today with. Having consultants write every single bylaw that we have, but. I think when it comes to things that are of a complicated nature for sure, but. I think that, you know, if we want to tweak the bylaws that we have, then Phil is, is doing a wonderful job in, in that particular regard. And I, I, I think that that piece of it I have no issue with.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Nancy, you had your hand up before?
Yeah, I, I agree with Marie that we do not have the expertise in the legal. Information that Berkshire Regional Planning has available to them. I know personally, I don't have the time to go back and look at or the understanding of all the laws and the rules and the regulations from the state. That they do, that they're bringing forward, that Phil. And his group are bringing forward to us. So we can take whatever they give us and. Mold it to what we need and what works for us. That I, I just so respect them, the knowledge and the contacts that they have. And that they can call the state and they can talk with the lawyers with the state. That we don't know, I don't understand all the state laws. I don't know that anybody here does. So we need to defer to them to explain it to us and how it would fit in for what we need. They're not telling us what we should have. They're offering us.
Really?
Information. To use. How it fits us. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Wayne?
I appreciate the. I appreciate the assistance. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. With these professionals. In sequencing things and. Telling us. Really organizationally how we need to approach these things. I think we might have done a better job in, in our own. Organization of what came first. I, I agree with Gary. That, that cottage estate bylaw was one that got us here. But I don't think there's any way we get through. Any of what we've discussed recently without that professional help.
Okay, thank you. Kate?
Yeah, um, you probably won't be surprised that I have a, a different opinion here, more aligned with Gary's comments. I guess my feeling is that we do have legal expertise and that's a Donna Brewer. And. You know, I like Phil and I think he's been helpful in some ways, but there have been some problems and. I'm not convinced that he is all that familiar with mass general law. He comes from Maryland and I think he moved here recently. So. I, you know, and Donna speaks at these mass municipal association. Meetings and my sense is that she is very immersed in mass general law, so I feel we do have the expertise on board. I, I'm not sure, I think we could take more advantage of her expertise. I mean, I'm kind of wondering. You know, I'm hoping she'll be at the, the public hearing tonight and I'm guessing she won't be, but I think she should be. So, and then there's just, there's been. I guess, you know, my question is, is. How will, there have been some problems, administrative problems and the interface with Phil has been through one person. And there's been confusion there and just like a simple request, like, you know, could you please date stamp the drafts? And I'm not just talking about the file name, but date stamp the actual draft in the document. You know, couldn't get, couldn't get him to do that and, and that's sort of a. And basic administrative thing. And so my question is how is this going to, you know, I, I know I'm outnumbered here. But how is this going to be? Set up? Is it going to be set up once again through one person? You know, you've got seven people on the board and, you know. So how is that going to be handled? I guess it's not going to be handled through Mike. I think it should be. You know, I think it should be handled by, I sent you an email, Bill, you didn't answer my email. But my question for you, my point was I feel that the interface with these people should be a neutral party. It should not be. Somebody who clearly has an agenda. I mean, Christine, look, you know, I can congratulate you on your intensity with. An interest in, in planning board, in planning work. But clearly, you know, I mean, when, since I've known you, since the six years you've been in town, you've been gunning to get rid of our two and four acre zoning. That's an agenda. Not everyone agrees with it. So I think we need a neutral party. As, to serve as the interface with whomever it is we use and that's, those are my, you know, I, I do not support. A forty thousand dollar expenditure. I think that in some, some respects are. Our bylaw has been, become sort of a sand, sandbox for, for people to play in, so to speak, and. We've been told by, by several people, by, by Donna Brewer, by Joel Russell. I think there was one other that there's nothing wrong with our, our zoning bylaw. And I feel like, you know, we sort of keep, keep looking for problems that aren't really there. And. Those are, and, and furthermore, it's, it's very time consuming. We have these, you know, endless three hour meetings and in the meantime. You know, there's, there's really, I'd like to see the Planning Board get back to more of its mission, which is, was handling some of the special permits that we handle and so on and. You know. Focus in a little bit more on the actual work we're supposed to be doing.
Well, do you see any value at all in being able to utilize consultants in any way, shape or form? And I would think that might include. Public hearing, presentations, explanations about how various approaches do or do not work? What are the pros and cons?
Yeah, it's a good question. Thank you, Roxanne. I would say that. What the plant, my feeling is what the Planning Board needs more than anything is something that Mike Canales can do. And that's, that's a training. My observation over the past two years is that. For new members, you know, there's a real learning curve and, and. Often they just have to, they're sort of on their own. And, you know, basic things like what's the difference between a, a permit and a special permit? Approval not required. I mean, there is training that's done up at regional planning, but. My observation is that it's, it's a little bit spotty and it doesn't necessarily seem to stick. So I've had, you know, several conversations with Mike. He's very knowledgeable. He's a resource, use him. And in terms of consultants, I think what we need is, is, is someone who can mediate. You know, there's a lot of polarization in the town and I would suggest. Something along the lines of what Patrick suggested and. But including in that someone who can, can do some mediation because I think that's what's needed here. You know, you've got. A lot of mistrust in town right now on these boards. So, you know, we need somebody who, who, you know, I mean, I mean, look, you know. Yeah, it's, I think we need to expand the canvas, you know, just paint a bigger picture. We've shown we can do it with that housing survey, survey. It's easy to do. Expand that canvas. And, and focus on mediation and expertise, yes, but.
Okay, well, you know, I've attended, you know, some of your meetings and I, you know, I watch them on CTSB if I fall asleep and this, I miss them. I can't stay awake. But, you know, I do listen and I come in and I've been listening to, you know, a lot of the discussion and in some ways. It's been heartening because I think there's been some fairly good discussion that's gone on with the Planning Board. I think some of the problems that you talk about, in fact, maybe most of them are just sit within the Planning Board itself. You have to determine what your priorities are. You have to have a consensus. Everyone isn't going to agree on every point. But to be able to move forward with anything. But to be able to move forward with anything, um and but I think the dialogue that's been going on has been useful and certainly it's been educational. Um for anybody who's listening, um it's it's kind of an eye opener and you see just how complicated it can get. So anyway, I thank you all for giving your input and um but the bottom line is is we're here to determine whether or not we approve monies for you, so.
And and I just want to make a quick point, which is that in zoning review, it was a select board that appointed the zoning review committee. It was a select board that appropriated the money for zoning review and it was a broad broad cross section of the town involved in zoning review. It wasn't simply one board. We're talking about broad changes to the entire you know, this is those this is the zoning bylaws in town of Stockbridge, okay? We're talking about broad changes to many, many aspects of this and I simply, I I I feel very strongly that.
About what the changes are and the changes don't happen without voter approval. They have to be voted in. We're talking about whether or not we're going to allocate funds for them to be able to hire.
Well, we allocated funds to zoning review without necessarily being a planning board consultant. We can have members of the planning board and members of our board participate and manage consultants through Michael if we so choose. We don't have to make this a planning board project is my point. Um we want to rewrite the bylaws. I will get on board, but I'm gonna I'm gonna require that we have a broader group than than simply the plan.
Am I incorrect in saying that the zoning bylaws are within the purview of the planning board, which is an elected body? It is not within the purview of the select board.
It's a purview of both boards.
Roxanne, you know, I mean, I was talking to someone who, you know, just, you know, a resident who isn't familiar with town government at all. And they have a little bit more of a sense of the select board, but they have no idea of what the planning board does. They have no clue about the planning board. Planning board is out of sight. I think, you know, if you're you're looking at something that is as has has the potential to have as much impact as our zoning bylaw, the more you can broaden the palette, the better.
You know, um i- i- if I can intergene interject here, first of all, Wayne has his hand raised and had had his hand raised for five minutes.
Wayne, just uh I'm sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
Um to Kate's point about uh contact with if we move forward with the consultant or consultants. It's we had our hands slapped when there was more than one person involved. We weren't allowed to do that. So I would I would just ask how you might make anything workable through.
I mean, that's certainly not true. All you had to do is make this up, convey your public means. They're open to the public and it just had to follow the open meeting law. Instead, you double down uh as a board on on having a gatekeeper who is not accountable to the public and that's kind of where you lost me frankly.
I wouldn't say she's not accountable to the public, Patrick. I think she's done a good job. Now, the fact that we didn't have four or five meetings to try to get anything designed. I'm thinking I'm I'm listening to what you're saying, but I'm going now we're going to get you folks involved in in a broader palette. Well, that's a recipe for not getting anything done. I'll tell you right now, we can't with seven people get anything done. We're going to include fifteen more people. I'm sorry, but I don't think that's you workable.
I agree, Wayne.
Um excuse me, hang on, hang on, hang on, hold on. Excuse me. Um the topic is the discussion regarding hiring consultants for the planning board. We've we've, I think understandably wandered around this subject and some of it has been uh enlightening and some has not. I think it's uh it's time to um bring this to a conclusion. I think we've heard that there uh since you tried to pull the uh group Roxanne, that there are five members of this board who want to proceed with these consultants and there are two who do not. You have the sense of the planning board. What do you want to do?
Well, we're not making a determination tonight, but Mike has his hand up.
Yeah.
Put your hand up.
Yeah, um just uh one observation in this whole discussion is um there seems to be a real definitive speech between people's comments in regard to the use of Berkshire Regional Planning and Philip Arnold and then other consultants. So is that at all worth discussing at this point or because everybody spoke in or at least the vast majority spoke in favor of the use of virtue regional planning. But I didn't hear much about the other consultants and that's just my observation. Thank you.
Well, can I speak?
No, hang on, Kate. You've you've had about eight minutes and a lot of other people haven't spoken more than about thirty seconds. I want to say that um we are at a crucial stage of the open space residential bylaw, uh the drafting of it. We're about to go to a a larger public meeting next week where this consultant Jeff Lee and Randall Arnold aren't are going to be with us and are going to explain and answer questions, listen to comments, listen to complaints, listen to suggestions. Uh it's it's imperative that those people be at that meeting, those consultants be at that meeting and be able to help us to follow up with uh those comments and get us to a point where we can present something at some future town meeting that the the town can vote on, that the planning board first can vote on and um and make it through the process so that the town can um uh come to a a decision about at a town meeting. I just think that to uh try to um separate these guys out at this stage is uh I mean, we want to talk about this for another half hour. Let's let's do it that way.
Can I comment, Phil?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that their history is getting a little mixed up. Um I, at the Desistown School hearing, that was back a long time ago, did mention the fact that I thought an open space bylaw would be a good solution to addressing development on that particular site based on what I knew. That has since been circulating through the town with a lot of discussion because this town is environmentally sensitive. And the issue with two and four acre zoning is that the land gets built. It's you come in completely um with engineers and say, this is what I want to build and here are all the lot lines and this is what I can do and the computer has generated out a proposal that maximizes the lots. And then you get what we got in town ten years ago with these great big lots. And if anyone can buy one of those great big lots, they are going to have to put on a million dollar or more house. And you see these million dollar houses selling in town to people who are outside our town. I think what I am hearing and what I'm not hearing tonight is the fact that we have a lot of people in town that are looking for smaller lots. They cannot maintain a big house and four acres of land. And it's that four acres is not being maintained and it's it's horrible. It's fragments, wildlife, bulldozers come in and flatten the property to put in all the utilities and the um requirements to meet the zoning. So look at what Mass Audubon and the state of Massachusetts say about open space and natural resource preservation. It is a bylaw that is protecting the environment. Every environmental group in the state is supporting it. Developers who use the bylaw are supporting it because it creates developments that are like Stockbridge. They're like Church Street. They're like the street I live on with smaller hot lots and access to open space. That is really an important consideration. We pay Joel Russell as a town twenty five thousand dollars to do his diagnostic test. And despite what I'm hearing tonight, Joel identified, and I hope people go and look at it. Pages broken down tonight, I just went through the highlights of the issues where our bylaws could be made better. It's not that they're illegal. They're certainly not illegal the way they are, but we're not taking advantage of the latest techniques. I support the people that twenty years ago put in large lot zoning. That was the technique that was cutting edge at the time. But as it was implemented, we saw the impacts. And so people have started moving to something that meets the needs of their community. So I think that there's a real need for people who understand these concepts. And yes, we have not addressed the cottage era estate. We worked with Joel for several months and we didn't get through because it is such a difficult bylaw. We started working with it with Randall and then with Jeff and we got we started talking first about the large lots and then we determined that we would look at the adaptive reuse of historic buildings and we started down that path. And people were at those meetings. They saw we were going around and around because it was too difficult to try to put the two pieces together. So this board voted to go back to Jeff and say, let's work first on the open space bylaw. That is what he is working on. We're not dealing with the adaptive reuse at this point. Once we get the open space bylaw, so we know where it's going and how people view it and what the density is that they want and all of those issues, then we can move forward and look at adaptive reuse. So that's why this is now a three prong per process. First, open space. Second, doing the replacement as the C E E's fall into the open space for certain properties. And then the third is developing regulations. But we have to have a bylaw on the books because there are developers out there and we're all hearing about how they're sniffing around, how they're coming up with proposals. And we need to figure out, are we going to just have miles of road going off into the wilderness and lots of big houses? Or are we going to really try to address what we believe is the needs of the town?
Christine, that sounds great.
Housing survey, but it was, you know, that would have helped us prove this, but.
I want to say something.
No, hold on a second. Look, look, you know, the current cluster subdivision bylaw allows you to do cluster subdivisions and yet.
Patrick, Patrick.
This is a meeting of the select board too, Bill, and you can manage me when we're in your meetings, but you will not manage me when you're not when you're ours.
This is this is a meeting of the planning board. You are.
It's on the it's on the town website. It's a meeting of the select board.
It's a meeting of the planning board. I'm chairing it and I don't want to I we're already way off the topic. Uh these are interesting uh subjects that need to be addressed in another forum, not tonight. We need.
Well, two months ago, I brought up the question of the red line in Bill and you said we need to do that. I never heard from you.
It was two months ago.
You don't let people talk in your meetings.
You don't answer emails, Bill, and I'd like to correct the record. The diagnostic report was not twenty five thousand dollars. It was fifteen thousand dollars. And the remaining of the ten remaining ten thousand dollars from the twenty five thousand dollars was spent by the planning board working with Joel on an open space residential development. We made no headway because we were up interrupted halfway through with the introduction of the state bylaw by Christine. And I'm sorry to say it, but that just sort of threw a monkey in the in the wrench and nothing happened after that.
I'd like to bring this uh topic, which I know we could go on for an hour on to a reasonable conclusion. The topic was to discuss the planning consultant and get some agreement on whether this uh forty thousand dollars will go on the town warrant or it will not. Roxanne pulled the planning board. You you saw the results. Do we need to keep talking about uh ancillary important but ancillary issues? The topic.
I think we need to know how this is going to be structured because the way it was.
Who's going to manage the consultant?
I'm sorry, Patrick?
Who's going to manage the consultant? Christine's off the board in two weeks.
The planning board will make a uh it's uh will make will vote and decide.
Are you planning on having somebody who's not on the planning board manage the consultant?
No.
Talking to.
To you, Bill.
I I have no such plans. I don't I haven't thought about it. I'll get to that when it when it when we get to it. I.
It needs to be somebody neutral. So far, you have not answered my emails on this question, so I'm bringing it to you in public.
Okay, that's fine. I don't have to answer your emails, Kate. Um can we?
I'm the chair, Bill, and you should answer emails from members of the board.
Can we proceed with um concluding this topic on the agenda, please?
I was like, we're done.
And I I'll just say, I think that we certainly have enough information to make a decision. We're not making a determination or taking a vote tonight. We'll do it on our next meeting as to whether or not we are going to approve. Um and I would just say, yes, you can encumber the monies that have not been spent. Um we know that so that this number is a changeable number. It's not necessarily forty thousand dollars that would go on the warrant if and when it's approved. So um we will make that determination in our next meeting.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Let's move on to the next.
Thank you, Roxanne.
We have Phil with us uh to address the second, the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing on bylaw amendments, the high the parking driveway and sign bylaws. These uh the notice about these amendments has been published in the Eagle. Do we need to read that notice?
Yes, you do.
Jennifer?
Um Bill, were you were you?
Yes, yes, um Wayne has what was published in the paper.
Okay.
And because it's a public hearing, um he he should read it.
I have it.
Thank you.
Uh okay, notice of planning board hearing relative to proposed zoning bylaw amendments pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty A, Sections five and eleven, a public hearing will be held by the Town of Stockbridge Planning Board via remote meeting. See agenda to join Stockbridge, Mass on Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty one at six thirty to review proposed changes to the zoning bylaws at which interested person persons shall be given an opportunity to be heard. Specifically, amendments are proposed for sign regulations, Section six point eight, off-street parking requirements, Section six point two and driveways and common driveway, Sections six point one six. The proposed texts are available for inspection at the selectman's office requested by phone request or email.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Um so this is a uh public hearing on these bylaw amendments. Excuse me, I'm just trying to adjust my screen. Hang on. And the the intention is that they will go on the town warrant at the annual meeting, annual town meeting next month. Uh assuming we approve them that that uh we prove that at the this public hearing tonight. Are there any comments or questions from members of the planning board? About the three uh amendments, drafts of which we we all have both uh redlined and uh unmarked.
You're going to do them individually, right?
Um sure. Guess we're required to. So show um shall we begin with six point two? That's the um sorry. That's the parking bylaw. So um we've seen the parking bylaw. Are there are there if there are no comments? Can I have? I guess we need both to approve this, even though we voted so far to approve it to to. Can I, I guess we need both to approve this, even though we voted so far to approve it to get to this point. Do we need to do it in the, in the, um, context of this public meeting?
This is to recommend to the select board for inclusion in the town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
And, um, I think that it needs to have a, just, um, a synopsis that Phil has previously re-given to us as the report from the planning board. And then if there are any proposed amendments, they should be included in the report to the board of selectmen that explains, explain who made the proposed amendment. Like if the select board has given us amendments, then that should be part of the official record.
Right.
Wasn't there a report from the select board that you were supposed to read into the, uh, into the record? Jennifer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I have it. Um, I think you all probably were sent it. Um, but because we sent these amendments to the selectmen already and they came back with their reply, with, uh, with their notes that, um, it should be read into the record. And that's that. And I can read the off-street parking requirements that, that, uh, that, uh, if you want.
Yes, why don't you do that, please, Jennifer?
Okay. So for the off-street parking requirements, the board of selectmen are referring the off-street parking zoning bylaw to the planning board for a public hearing, which is today. The board noted that there were a number of changes and the goal was to address that no one downtown can comply with the bylaws. The board of selectmen have asked to have the following recommendations of the zoning bylaw to be read into the public hearing. The board of selectmen do not approve of the planning board's proposed zoning bylaw. In addition, the board of selectmen are referring the zoning, the following zoning bylaw to the planning board for a public hearing. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to change the town bylaw section six point two point one as follow and strike six point two point one C to accurately reflect the downtown off-street parking limitations for retail and dining establishments. Six point two point one, off-street parking spaces shall be provided for every new structure, the enlargement of an existing structure, the development of a new use or any change in an existing use in accordance with the following schedules, with the exception of retail and eating establishments within the downtown Stockbridge Village Business Zoning District as shown on the zoning map. And they're striking C, the business district, one parking space for each five hundred feet of gross floor area plus adequate space for employee service and supply vehicles. So they wanted to strike that. So that's the parking.
Okay. So, uh, the next step is for us to vote to, um, uh, recommend this.
For the warrant, for the town meeting.
Right.
Um, it's possible to include a comment in the notes or report to the select board. Um, I'd like to include the comment that I've made before, which is, um, concern that, um, this bylaw now, by not requiring, um, Michaels or the red line in to have off-street parking for their employees potentially exacerbates the parking downtown. And if they should decide to, to build out on the, on the land that they're currently using for parking.
Did you get that, Jennifer?
Okay, by not requiring off-street parking, um, for employees, it exacerbates the problem.
Exacerbates.
Exacerbates.
Yeah, that's what I wrote. Is that okay?
Yeah, why don't you send it to me, Jennifer, and I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
So, um, can we proceed to vote on them?
Yes.
Your motion to approve the, the referral to the, uh, town meeting.
For the selectmen.
To the selectmen in the town meeting, right? As, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Jennifer, please call the roll.
Gary?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Kate?
Day.
Christine?
Yes.
Wayne?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, so that was parking.
So the six point eight is, um, the sign regulation?
Right.
And this is what the, uh, board of selectmen sent back to us. The board of selectmen are referring the sign regulation zoning bylaw to the planning board for a public hearing. The board of selectmen have asked to have the following recommendations to the zoning bylaw to be read into the record of the public hearing. It is the board of selectmen's recommendation that they, the board of selectmen remain the permitting authority under the sign regulations. That's all.
So they want to be in charge of all signs, permanent and temporary?
I think they only, I think they only want to be in charge of the temporary ones, um, and that we would.
No.
I know. I know, but I think they, I think they left it out.
I think when they clarified it, they wanted it to be exactly what their responsibilities were previously before we started amending the bylaw. So just go back to who had the permits before would have it going forward.
Right, that's not what they're saying.
I know, but I think they mis-wrote it. And it was supposed to be just for temporary signs that they would keep.
So we could, uh, in response, say that we, um, accept the, uh, what we believe the select board meant to say, which was, uh, they have, they be the permitting authority for temporary signs. As.
Right.
Has been, as has been the case in the past.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, can I have a motion to, um, approve this amended bylaw, bylaw amendment? Gary, is that a? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion of this amendment? Uh, Gary, sorry, I thought you were seconding.
Oh, no, I had a question about, um, what about the rest of the signed bylaw that was, uh, um, are we just voting on temporary signs? Are we, are we talking about the other amendments that were in there too?
No, we're talking about our amendments. I just wrote, read the comments from what the, uh, selectman said. But we're, we're talking about what, uh, Phil did for us.
Okay. It wasn't, I wasn't clear on that.
Did anybody second?
Yeah. I'm still not clear.
Uh, hang on, do we have a second?
I seconded.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, uh, Kate.
Yeah, I, this is, Phil, this is a question for you. Um, could you explain to me what's, at this point, what signs are allowed in the residential districts? And how much of the square footage is by right? That's the first part of a two-part question.
So allowed by right would be one two-square-foot sign. And then assuming somebody can meet the setback requirement, they may be allowed to have a second two-foot sign. That's by right.
So when I look at the wording, um, I just, I'm going to pull it up if you can. Give me a second here. Can you pull it up?
I'm on a separate computer, uh, to do a screen share for that. But it's section six point eight, uh, point six, permanent signs in all zoning districts.
Okay, hold on a second. I'll get it.
I can read it too. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It says the following permanent signs may be displayed on private property in all zoning districts subject to the regulations contained.
Can you, I actually just want to ask you a question. I don't want to have you read it, actually.
Sure.
Okay, so what I don't understand here, so six point eight point six for any residential principal use, one sign not to exceed two square feet in area. For any allowable accessory use, one sign not to exceed two square feet in area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then what in addition to that? If anything, is allowed? And that's, those, those two signs are by right, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, what in addition to that? If anything, is allowed by right?
I don't think there was anything allowed by right. Then there was the potential for a four-square-foot sign.
Okay, so then my next question is, um, what is allowed? If, what is allowed by, by permit beyond that four-square-feet total by right in a residential district?
It was my understanding that after the last meeting, that's where we left off, that they could have the four-square-foot sign by special permit. And then previously there was that extra provision to have an additional four-square-foot sign. And the board decided last time that that was excessive. So that last part, um, was removed.
Okay, so can you explain to me where in this draft it indicates? That's what I'm confused about. Where does it indicate? Because I thought that the special permit was removed. So where does it, where, can you show me where there's special permit wording for, for another four-square-feet in a residential district?
One moment.
And if you want to, just tell me where to scroll till I'll be happy to do that.
And you said by, it was special permit? It should be a sign permit. This is a different thing.
Okay, well, can you show me where that four-square-feet additional signage is allowed by, by sign permit?
Okay. Sorry, bear with me. I have that crossed out in this draft for some reason. So I guess I have a follow-up question. At the last meeting, did we agree to remove both? Because it seems that both have been removed from the draft. So, I mean, that was a concern at the last meeting, was it to have the, the two smaller signs? And then that provision for the four-square-foot signs was excessive, but it's, it was removed from the draft.
Well, my understanding was that that's what I recommended, but that the rest of the board, and I don't think Gary was there. The majority wanted to have, um, two, two-square-feet in the residential area plus a four-square-foot by special permit. That was my understanding of what the board.
That's what I thought as well. So that might just be an error that they got deleted. No, I agree with you. I thought that that was the understanding too.
I thought we decided that was excessive.
No, to have. Yeah, to have both be excessive, yeah.
That was, that was my opinion, Nancy.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought.
Shall we go with that then?
What do you mean, go with that? Go with the determination from last meeting? I think this was just an error. You know, I'm going off of like a marked up thing. And when I think I, I accepted the change, it just accidentally deleted it. The board determined last time that to remove all of, um, those provisions for four-square-foot signs was too much.
We would, we'd still have control over that additional four feet, right? Why, Kate, do you want that removed?
It's not in here.
No, but I, but you want to remove it. I know it accidentally, it seems like it accidentally was removed, but I'm, I'm wondering on your reasoning, I just.
I think we're talking, uh.
I think Wayne, I think Wayne asked me the question and my answer, Wayne, is that I think it's for residential districts, I think it's excessive. I think that, you know, having two in the residential district for, for residents, having two signs, um, the potential for two signs for a total of four-square-feet is plenty.
Plus one four-square-foot sign by sign permit.
So my next question, Phil, is, um, if it's by sign permit, what authority does the planning board have to turn it down? To turn it down if it's by sign permit? If it's a four-square-foot sign and it's in the bylaw, what's the authority of the board to say no?
It's a good question. Have you denied sign permits in the past?
My understanding, and this is why I ask you, is that the board only has discretion with a special permit. If it's a permit, it's cut and dried. Either it, it makes the grade or it doesn't. If it's, makes that requirement like with it under six point eight point six, where you've got for any residential principal use, one sign not to exceed two-square-feet in area, that's a by right. Same with number two. And so we must grant a permit for that. So my understanding is that with special permits, that's where you have discretionary say. And that's why I'm sorry to be picking on this, but that's why.
But you're referencing a sign permit. I, so I pulled up the original bylaw, um, you know, the one that's active right now. And that references a sign permit. So it would be, the process would be different than obtaining a special permit. I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
My question is, um, what's the authority of the board? Last, at the last meeting, we discussed the idea that the board would permit before. a four, an additional four-square-foot of signage in the residential area, remember?
Yes.
Okay, so my question for you is, in that scenario, what's, under what conditions does the board have the authority to say no?
That's the only restriction on it. I mean, because the only thing that's changed from the existing bylaw was Donna's suggestion to remove any non-residential principal use.
I think, you know, I think you need to have an answer to this. I'm not hearing an answer to this. And what I need to know is, look, you guys can go ahead and vote on this, but, you know, these things are, these things matter, and I think what you need to find out is, does the board have any discretionary say or not? That needs to be clear to people. People need to understand that. I need to understand that.
That's why I asked how it has been handled in the past, because much of this language hasn't really changed. I mean, it doesn't, in, in what I'm looking at now, it doesn't have all these provisions.
The reason it changed, Phil, is because Donna highlighted at the last minute a First Amendment issue, so this was never an issue previously. Okay, this just didn't come up because it was just a total of two signs, two square feet each in the residential district. It isn't until now where she highlighted this concern over First Amendment that this has become an issue.
So why not just delete that altogether, and then you don't have that issue?
That's what I would do. I would just leave it at the two, two-square-feet signs as a by right and leave it there. To me, that seems plenty. I mean, that's a compromise.
I guess the other approach would be to ask Donna, what discretion we act, your question, Kate, was, what discretion does the planning board have to deny a sign permit? And I, don't we have the same discretion with respect to special permits?
I'm not sure. I think that's, that goes, that's my question, really. You know, we have a permit coming up for a sign, and if it meets the, the guidelines of the sign bylaw, we can approve it. If it doesn't, we can't. And I had the conversation with Mike Canales about this. You know, if we, we have to go with what we have in our bylaw, because it's, it's not a special permit. It's a permit. And if those folks, you know, if we get a bylaw request that doesn't meet the guidelines, and they don't like it, well, they can, you know, they can take it to the zoning board of appeals for variance. But the planning board's role is to turn down a permit request that does not meet the permit. I was sort of hoping Mike would be here to explain this, because I think he explains it better than I do. And he has a lot more experience, you know, up in North Adams. He was telling me that many, many more, the, the zoning board of appeals has, I mean, I know it's a city, but still, zoning board of appeals does a lot more business based on this idea of the planning board needs to turn something down based on the parameters in the bylaw. So then the applicant, if they choose, they can seek a variance. So I, frankly, I think this needs a little more work, but, you know, that's my recommendation.
How do others on the board feel?
I, I guess I just don't see a big issue with somebody asking for additional, but I wouldn't mind clarification on it from her, just to, to make sure what our authority is over it.
Can we just have this clarified? Does this hold up the whole, um, getting it on the warrant? Or can we just have it clarified and then accept it? Or, or is this holding up?
Yeah, that's, that's the question. I don't know. Obviously, we don't have Donna on the line, and I'm not sure she could answer on the, on the spot anyway. She may have to do some research. But we can ask the question tomorrow, and she's pretty responsive.
And then what happens?
Maybe we, I mean, another question, I suppose, for Donna is, do we approve this, approve recommending it to the select board and town meeting subject to the inclusion of 6.8.7 little i to include one for additional four square foot sign by sign permit?
You mean by special permit or by sign permit?
Well, the language says sign.
Sign permit, not special.
Let's be clear, though, that's my question. Do you understand it?
Yeah, and I've, I've taken a note, and, and we can contact, or I can contact Donna tomorrow and ask her specifically, what discretion do we have as a planning board to deny a sign permit under this proposed draft of the amended sign bylaw?
Jennifer, do you know how much time we have before we have to have it to put on the warrant?
Well, the problem is, we're not meeting on the 18th.
No, we won't meet till June 1st. And we are going to have a public hearing on the short-term rental then. So that would be the last time to get something on the warrant.
But I think Michael has.
For town meeting.
June 1st.
I believe Michael has told me that they want to be able to print the, the warrants by the end of May. Some date.
Well, I told him that the, June 1st was the first time that we would do the public hearing on the short-term rental in the regulations of use there.
Right.
4.11. So we'll have a public hearing on June 1st, and if it's approved, it will go on the warrant.
What if you were to send it to the select board subject to clarification and resolution on that point?
We can try that.
I think that would work, because some towns actually hold planning board hearings the day of town meeting, and that is because they need to do a clarification on a bylaw and make a recommendation. So I think they could accept what we have with the understanding that we will continue to work on this. At least to get it on the town meeting warrant, which I think is important for part of the bylaw.
We can, we can try that, and if Donna says no dice, we, we have to go to Plan B, and, and maybe approve this at the June 1st meeting and hand out maybe a revised warrant article at the meeting. I mean, is that, has that ever happened before?
It has happened in other communities because of these kinds of issues. So I don't see it as a problem. And it could always be amended on the floor of town meeting also.
I mean, it really has to, because right now, this makes absolutely no sense.
Yeah, I think we need clarification, no doubt. And so let's, let's, what, what was the language? We refer this back to the planning board and to town meeting with the understanding that 6.8.7 point, or little i, will be further reviewed, or something to that effect. Does that sound?
Clarified?
It's not crystal clear, but it, it kind of gets the point that we've, we've got to work on this section.
I refer it to the select board, you mean?
Right, that's what I meant. Any, any comments about that? Anybody have a brighter idea?
Gary.
Sounds, sounds good.
Gary.
I'm sorry, Gary, do you have your hand up?
Oh, it's not a brighter idea, please, but it's just a thought that if, if we're going to continue to work on this, I think we have to continue the public hearing and not close it, that's all.
Okay, good point. So we'll vote to continue the public hearing.
At the end.
Right. Good point.
For further discussion on, on the, the sign bylaw.
Right, right. Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, can I have a motion to refer this to the select board for inclusion on the town warrant? As a town warrant, as a the understanding of section 6.8.7 little i is needs further clarification to, to follow as soon as we have legal advice. Did you get that, Jennifer?
Yep.
So that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Phil, are you okay with this approach?
That works for me.
Okay. Jennifer, we call the roll, please. And, and before you call the roll, do we continue the public hearing now or after we voted? Do we vote to continue the public hearing first before we vote on this, this bylaw amendment? The order of things.
I think we can.
Phil, do you know?
Don't we have another public hearing tonight?
Phil, do you know the answer to that?
No.
No, I don't. No, I don't, Kate.
Okay, so I think you should probably vote to continue the public hearing, because you want to clear what, that this is, because the attorney general will look at how we process this.
Okay, so instead of my motion, which I, I guess I, in light of that comment, Christine, I should withdraw, we should simply vote to continue the public hearing? Is it as simple as that, with the understanding of this is the section of this bylaw that we need clarification on?
It sounds safer to me.
Yeah, I, I think that makes more sense. So can I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we do have to comment on the driveway?
Yeah.
Bylaw, because that's part of the open.
That comes next.
That's next.
We're on, okay. Signs still, Nancy.
So we're just continuing the public hearing on the sign by law?
Right.
This portion of it, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Yep, Gary.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Wayne.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Now driveways. Actually, you know, we kept the representative from Camp Machinac, poor Kevin, on for, I don't know how long.
I'm just sitting patiently. I'm enjoying the show.
Okay, show. All right.
I mean, I, I would like to, you know, we've been talking about signs, it's a great segue, but I, I'm, just, whenever you're ready, I'm here.
Kevin, some people go to these meetings all that they go to every single town meeting.
God help them. God love them. Because, okay, I, I could think of a thousand better things to do, no offense to anybody, but.
Shall we get, address the driveway bylaw amendment? And then as quickly as we can.
Driveways should be very fast. There wasn't any correction from the last meeting.
Right. And the, the select board asked, the board of selectmen are referring to the driveway and common driveway zoning bylaw to the planning board for public hearing. The board of selectmen have asked to have the following recommendations to the language of the zoning bylaw to be read into the pub, record of the public hearing. So it's 6.16.1. Basically, requirements applicable to all new driveway, so new is the word. The building inspector shall not issue a building permit for the principal structure on the lot served by a new driveway unless all of the conditions in section 6.16.1 have been met. They scratched the next two sentences, because that is all contained in the curb cut. The minimum area and configuration of a new driveway shall be such to provide a minimum of two off-street parking spaces as defined by section 6.2.4 for each lot served by the driveway. The board of selectmen and the town building inspector feel that the language is a lot clearer by start stating new driveways. The town administrator indicated that the language addressing safe access from the right-of-way is addressed in the curb cut bylaw, so that's why part of this was struck. That's it.
And those changes have already been incorporated into the latest, everything that Jennifer said.
Yep. Okay. Any discussion of this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any, any, I guess we've had no discussion, just for good order's sake, any discussion? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you please call the roll to?
Sure. Gary.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Wayne.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Phil, for your help.
Thank you, Phil.
Should I stick around for ADUs, or are we tabling that until next time?
Yeah, I think.
We're going to do this side.
Yeah, I mean, the short of it is, I'm still waiting to hear back from Donna and Ned, so it still needs a little bit of work.
Yeah. I think we should defer ADUs unless somebody has a burning desire to look at what we've already done and, and are waiting to, to see more. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. It's already almost 8:30. So the next is, believe it or not, Camp Machinac. Kevin, what would you like to show us?
I don't know if you've got our sign permit, but I can definitely share if that's what you'd like me to do.
We've seen it, but if you'd like to show it to us, you're welcome to share the screen.
Okay, let me share. So I'll share first. This is our existing sign. Definitely a non-conforming sign by the regulation. It has been there. So far, we've been trying to, to source the actual date, but at the minimum 35 years, that poor sign's been hanging there. And over time, we have come to realize that that sign has really no indication or assistance for any of the emergency medical services. Basically, it has no address on it. That's one of the reasons that we'd like to seek to replace that sign. which I can go into. This is this is our next. Leave that one for later. This is the proposed sign, changing its orientation and including the the address of camp. Both for emergency medical services reasons and also to get rid of the eyesore and and put up something that's a little nice. Now, we realize that we're up, we're owned in our four. Although I would argue we're surrounded by other commercial entities that have nonconforming signs as well. I actually went and measured some of them. So if anybody's interested, I did learn a lot about area of an oval throughout this because that seems to be the most popular shaped sign amongst our neighbors is oval. So I went and did some of that, but you know, this is this is, I guess, our our request. And we know it's nonconforming. We know it has been, which is obviously why we come to you to talk. You know, our our real argument is getting past this, we probably end up going to the zoning board because we don't know that we're necessarily a residential property within sort of the residential stuff. So that's our pitch on that one. We've also requested an additional sign on our Oak Street entrance. This we, as of two thousand eighteen, really, and the advent of the use of smartphones as people's GPSs have now been guiding vehicle traffic up through the residential part of Oak Street and then into camp unbeknownst to any of us, obviously creating a security issue for our two hundred and fifty young men. And also when Tanglewood is operating and concerts back up on Hawthorne, traffic backs up on Hawthorne, the GPSs are rerouting through camp at dinnertime while our kids are not expecting cars to be coming through. We have spoken with our neighbors about this and they have given us feedback about removing the residence only line off of there. They're worried about, you know, get their guests and deliveries to their house, which were totally amenable to really the no through traffic and and sort of guiding people towards our entry is is the significant part of that and trying to eliminate traffic on what is a really nasty dirt road that goes back to camp. And also allowing us to, you know, provide safety and security to our campers and our staff who aren't expecting cars to be coming through camp rushing to get to camp. So again, that one is is nonconforming. It would be if you're driving along Hawthorne. We're we're trying to put it as close to the tree line on the right hand side of Oak Street away just so that people can turn in and then turn back out realizing that that's not a through road and that they should go another direction. And of course, you know, the signs can be made smaller, but our concern is if they're too small, they're not going to be effective in either circumstance of one. So we're seeking guidance. We're seeking, you know, the love and attention of you guys who have definitely beaten that sign file off around tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, that's that's really our our request and and hopefully we, you know, I I know I understand about eyesores and and things like that. And, you know, we're trying to make it as natural and as and as less as as least intrusive as possible, but still a concept.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the planning board? I I oh, Gary, sorry, please.
So is it going to be the same size? Or is it going to be larger or smaller?
The 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 new sign will be the same size as our exist. The replacement is the the same square footage as the existing sign, except the orientation goes from vertical to from horizontal to vertical. The new sign is the same dimensions as that, but as a new entity.
And then what about the additional signs?
That those it's only the two signs. One would be replacing an existing sign and one would be a new sign.
So Kevin, my understanding is that your existing sign is, I know that you sent this graphic. The graphic, it shows the signs being about the same. But first of all, you know, the the by law is four square feet. So if you're replacing that sign, you need to go with four square feet. And.
That's why we're here. You know, we would we would say that we have a thirty year ease, at least a thirty year easement on that.
Yeah, if you're replacing it, I don't think you have that. That's my understanding from previous signs. Now, over at the 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 other the dirt at Oak Street, there's actually, if it's a directional sign, which it looked like it was to me, then you can actually do that one. It falls under the definitions in our sign by law. But I would encourage you to make it smaller. Twelve square feet seems like overkill to me. And I would encourage you to make that one four square feet. I know people think that bigger is better with signage, but it's it's not necessarily the case. So I'd urge encourage you to do four square feet over there as well.
Well, I would I would respectfully disagree. We have going down Oak Street, we have four. No trespass, wrong way, do not enter. No through road. We have various signs along that road and they are passed by, you know, those James Taylor people that want to beat the Hawthorne line. And and, you know, we're trying that that really is the the jut of us trying to get this particular sign in place is to is to stop that encroachment on that road. It's it's not built for the traffic that has now started to come through it. And it's it's not built for driving through the middle of a camp.
Well, can you pull up the the proposed sign because it would need to be a directional sign? Can you propose?
I I have I have shared the screen. Can you not see that?
I'm not seeing the old one. Not the Oak Street sign.
You'd like the old sign?
No, Oak Street, the Oak Street.
This is this is the sign that would go on on Oak Street.
We're seeing the sign. We're seeing the sign that you have at the entrance to the camp on our screens.
Old one.
Okay, well, let me get rid of that then. Let me share. Sorry.
Do I, you know, probably I should pull up what we have because what we have is not what you're showing.
That's fine. I'm sharing it right now. I see what I had there. So this is the proposed Oak Street sign.
And what are the what are the dimensions, Kevin?
This is four three three high by four wide. Yes, that could definitely be scaled back a little bit. We we did this purely because we wanted to put the residence only language in there. That now is, you know, in consultation with our the four neighbors that are on Oak Street have asked that not to be there, just to leave it at no through traffic. So, you know, that could definitely shrink the sign.
Well, the request that we have is is not for it was for, and I it's for actually it's for four by four point one by three point one is what we received as a request, not three by five. So you've gotten even bigger on us. Yeah, you've got it.
No, I've got four by three by one. This is I'm looking at it right here. This is what I propose.
All right, so.
And that is a directional sign. Doesn't that qualify as a directional sign?
It does. It does.
Got an arrow.
Got an arrow. I don't.
That is an arrow.
I don't like the size of it. I would strongly encourage you to scale it down.
What what size would you like? I I I respectfully don't know that a four four by a four square foot sign, like four by one, or even, you know, a version of that is is going to necessarily work. But, you know, I'm happy Wheatley has a five point five square foot sign. White Pines has a four point five five eight square foot sign. Actually, they have two of them. Just for reference.
I would make it smaller than the White Pine sign.
We are talking about a safety issue here. I I don't think we should ignore that. We don't want cars zooming through a an area packed with children.
And and I can tell you honestly, they do zoom. I mean, we've I've had to I've had to physically get in front of cars with a golf cart to slow them down.
Yeah, I I believe you.
Because it's, you know, it's James Taylor and I want to get to the line, skate parking before everybody else.
Yeah. So as a directional sign at four by three, four feet by three feet, does this meet the current by law?
It does.
Well, there you go.
I'll show you the the wording. One second.
That's the case. While you're searching for it, Kate.
We see the the new sign though for the
Yeah.
main entrance.
That does not meet the by law.
Four by three?
Nope.
What's the by law say?
Four by four, four square feet.
Two by two.
Yeah.
Wow.
By one, or yeah.
Well, isn't there some kind of historical significance to the size? I don't want to use the word grandfathered, but if they're replacing the size of the sign that was there.
No, it's not grandfathered in. We've been through this before.
But.
If they refurbish the old sign, they can use that sign, the four by three. But because they are wanting a whole new sign upfront, it it isn't in our by law.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Right, if they're, the existing sign is like around eight, nine square feet. And this sign is comes to twelve point six square feet. Because you.
Existing sign is actually by its highest point, by its highest point to it is three feet high by four feet wide.
I'm sorry.
The existing sign is three feet high by four feet wide.
Kevin, would you ever consider refurbishing the one and hang it the way you want to?
We would. We would consider it. Our our fear there is that it doesn't have an address locator on it. And that's sort of the impetus for the adjustment is to identify.
If you use the same, if you use the the same sign, could you couldn't you get the address on it or no?
I think you can.
You can change the wording in the look of it.
You just can't change the shape of it.
Or the size.
So existing shape, existing size.
It's the same sign.
Fun, isn't it?
So so I would be okay. You would also be okay with me using the existing shape and size of the existing sign and altering it to include the information we wanted to include.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I I don't know about others, but I would agree with the three by four directional sign for safety reasons.
I would, that if it's legal. If we can do it, I would agree with that.
I mean.
But it doesn't fit the the it doesn't fit the the requirement for a directional sign.
I know, but we're talking, this is not just.
So.
The safety sign.
Which sign are you talking about?
He's gonna have to go to zoning Board of Appeals for that second sign.
I think the second sign, if you look at the zoning by law, you'll see here it says, for the purposes of this by law, are you all with me?
Hmm, yeah.
Following shall not be included in the application of the regulations herein. And then under C, signs directing, guiding or controlling traffic and parking on private property but bearing no advertising matter. So I thought that might apply to the second sign by by Oak Street.
If the neighbors approve of this sign and think you want it, it seems to me, based on what Kate says, that we could approve it. And it certainly makes sense to get it up sooner than later because by the time there's another opportunity to hear this, it's going to be into the season that there could be problems. And I think we'd all feel terrible if something happened because there was a car speeding through a private street.
Oh, my God, another emergency. I mean, does everyone think that this is? Hold on a second. Kevin, can you pull that second sign up again?
The main sign.
The main sign.
Front front entrance.
Yeah.
No, that the Oak Street sign. Okay, can you guys see this?
Yeah.
The one with the arrow, is that what you're seeing?
No.
In your by law.
Right, hold on a sec. I'll pull up the other sign. Okay, does everyone agree that this is a directional sign? Because that's kind of what it has to be.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody agree with me that it could be smaller and still accomplish that goal?
What what does the what is the dimensions that it gives in the by law?
Well, this, if it's a directional sign, it's it's exempted from the by law. But I'm trying to encourage Kevin to make it small.
No, I I I'm quite I'm quite happy to make that. I I can make that not as tall. I'm I'm more concerned about its directionality because I'm going to lose the residence only lettering off of that. That that those words our neighbors did not appreciate because they're concerned that their guests, their deliveries will not occur at their houses. And we're comfortable with that. That is a minimal invasion in our in our world. So, you know, the the height of that can definitely come down. It could come to eight square feet. It could be four by two. And we just compress those from the height.
I would try to make it smaller. And then, I mean, you are going to put it on your land, right?
It is. Yes, it's going to go on our property.
Okay.
It is abutting the road. That's the only, that's why we came nicely to have.
But yeah, it needs to to be effective, right?
Right.
Yeah. Well, I think if you can squeeze it down by removing residence only but leaving it as wide as you propose. And because it's a directional sign and it has to do with safety, I would I would support this. And I'd also support the main sign if you can you know, freshen it up with a same size and shape and include the six Hawthorne Road address. And I think then we could approve this tonight, right?
Yes.
Which would be a good thing.
It would be a great thing. It would be it would be worth two hours.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So Kevin, you're going to bring it down to eight square feet?
I I will, I will, I would, I can bring the the Oak Street sign down to eight square feet.
Four by two.
Four by two or smaller if we can get it so that it's still obnoxious enough, but polite enough.
Yeah, the word pleases in there. That's nice.
Well, that's what we were trying to be nice.
So.
That's and it's also one of the reasons we we weren't really thrilled with residence only. We put that on there and we weren't really thrilled with the language because it's a little not campy. And our neighbors ended up saying that as well. So we're quite comfortable with no through traffic.
Why did the why did the neighbors not like it? I'm just curious.
That they have house guests. They have, you know, UPS. They're concerned UPS wouldn't go there. They would go to us and we'd get their deliveries. And I don't want to be managing somebody's Amazon deliveries. We get enough stuff. So you know, I we're we're totally fine with it. That's the language is like to us, the consideration is getting them off the street. Whatever the language has to be, the language has to be.
Yeah. You haven't considered putting up a gate?
We have. Again, it becomes where, where exactly do we put it on that Oak Street? That doesn't impact our neighbors and their ability to get in and out. I'm not sure if anybody's taken Oak Street, but it's private house, private house, a camp building, private house, private house, camp building, and then in camp proper. So, and there's a, and there's a, uh, creek goes through there that we'd probably need a special permit for because it'd be well within our lake and overlay.
Okay. That answers
We have considered it. It's definitely on our radar.
Okay. So can I make a motion to approve these, approve this, uh, Oak Street sign, uh, shrunk to eight square feet? And the, uh, front entrance sign using the same shape and size? And, uh, including if, if, uh, you so choose, the street address. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Can I move it?
Is that you Nancy?
I said
Or Marie?
Marie.
Any further discussion?
No.
Can we have, uh, Jennifer, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Uh, Gary?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for, uh, being so patient.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate your help. We want to be good neighbors. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, as we said, uh, as I said a minute ago, we're not going to do ADUs or an update from Jeff Lacy who's not with us.
I think there is, um, some discussion. Um, just so everybody is reminded that there is the event on May the 12th where Jeff and Randall are going to explain their bylaw. And we're hoping that planning board members will encourage people that they're talking to, to attend and get accurate information on what is being proposed and how it will impact the town if it's eventually approved. But this is the time to have input before the actual bylaw is written in a way that's harder to amend it. And I think that there is however, some concern that is outstanding that Jeff would like some guidance on. And it has to do with, um, Wayne's consistent concern regarding the, um, being able to understand the density neutrality versus what Jeff is proposing, which is density negative. And I think that Wayne, um, may want to have to say something about this.
Well, I'd like to see, I requested over a week ago, I don't know when it was now, but I wanted to see an illustration as he did before. He showed us some examples of an RPZ with different densities. I would like to see a true example of density neutral in an illustration that we can take a look at. And I would like to, the, the numbers associated with that done in reverse. So we know what math needs to be done to get to dense, true density neutral. And, and if he, if he is not going to do this with anything less than a motion for that to be done, I'd like to make a motion and to that effect. And I can clean up the language if you'd like, but I really, I want to see this. I, he keeps resisting this, uh, approach and I, I know, I'm not going to feel comfortable moving forward until I understand fully what that looks like.
I don't, I'm not sure, um, unless somebody else feels differently, but we need a motion. Uh, Wayne, you've, you've articulated the point well. I think, uh, Christine can convey this to, uh, Jeff and I'm sure he will produce such a demonstration.
Bill, he has requested that he receive a motion
Okay.
Board because I took Wayne's request. And so I think what Wayne was saying, um, that under the count calculation, to, to determine the base maximum number of allowable residential unit in the project area, divide the net acreage by the figures approximating the current permissible density or lot yield under existing bylaws to change, to achieve roughly density neutrality.
But I want that to include the math that lead, that leads up to that.
I understand what you just said. Can someone just translate that into English?
I, I, I just want to see an illustration that shows density neutral and the math associated with it that gets you there. In other words, you know, in R two and R four.
So you want informa, more information?
I would like to see the, an, an actual illustration that he's provided before seemingly right off the tip of his finger, but won't do this one for some reason.
I agree, Wayne.
Yeah, I think that's a motion, right Wayne?
I would like, I would
Add to that, I'd like also, I've requested several times from Christine, um, a copy of Jeff's PowerPoint. And I'd like to have a copy of that. It's public information.
Which PowerPoint?
The one today?
No, the one he did for the planning board. It was kind of orange colored. It should have been public information. I asked for it and I didn't get it.
I didn't get the request from you. But you want the pow, what PowerPoint, Kate? Well, can I call you under, um, and not, I think it would not be a violation if I call you to get
You can send me an email on town email.
Okay. I'd like to do that.
Okay. So Wayne, what, did you, uh, I think you made that in the form of a motion, did you not?
Uh, if I didn't, I will now.
Do you, um,
I'm going to put, put my request in the chat box, Christine, so you can get it right here. Jeff will know exactly what I mean.
Did you get it, Jennifer? Wayne's motion?
I'll second that, Bill.
Did you get it, Jennifer? Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure Jennifer got the motion. In, in Wayne's words.
Um, well, basically I said, um, that, you know what, Wayne? Write it down and send me an email. How about that?
How about that?
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
I'd like to add my request to the motion. It's information, same request, same type of thing.
Okay.
I second her amendment.
All in favor. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I'm jumping again. Jennifer has to call the roll.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye, and thank you for requesting it, Wayne.
Christine?
Aye.
Okay.
And you have the, uh, Jennifer, you have in the motion, the, my request?
Motion to, to request the PowerPoint.
From Jeff.
The PowerPoint from Jeff.
PowerPoint.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we're nearly there, but, um, this is the last meeting in which Christine will be, uh, a participant. Regular meeting. Um, and I know she'd like to say a word.
Well, I would. This is really emotional. It's not what I had hoped for or expected. But I made a decision and I'm going to miss being a part of your discussion. And I think that it's really important that the people in this town get to realize what the planning board does and the hours and hours and hours that is spent working on these bylaws and these amendments and making decisions that are hard. They sometimes go against everything you believe in, like for me, cutting down trees is just something I hate, 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 happen to approve. But yet if our bylaws require that, I think it is some, you know, it's what we do. And I think we have done a really amazing job. I'm disappointed that right now there seems to be this undercurrent in town about not understanding our process. And I hope people hear that and in the future we do a better job, or you do a better job. And, cause I'll take full responsibility for not making the processes clear as I think it should be. And make sure people understand why these bylaws take so long to develop because we're dealing with serious legal issues that have a huge impact on people and their homes and their future. And so this deliberative process is really exciting and worthwhile. And I think it's worth all of your time. So I really appreciate it. And I hope that we can move, or you can move forward and I can be involved in helping you to understand and work on really getting bylaws that people understand and can, we can support. So thank you for including me, for letting me serve. Thank you for all the people in town who voted for me. And I'm going to be involved. I'm certainly not going to walk away from planning and zoning. But it's going to be at a level where I can deal with all my other responsibilities that have come up since I pulled my papers for the first run two years ago. So thank you and, um, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Christine.
But thank you, Christine.
For everything.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christine.
Christine, I always appreciated your knowledge and, and, and for getting us up to speed on a lot of the state stuff. So, uh, on top of your personality, I really appreciated that and, and, uh, your help in these areas. And we wish you well with your family.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Welcome to that. Yes. Thank you. So there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye. Thanks. Bye, everybody.